Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Would you approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No citizens to be here today to see. That payment of bills and vouchers.
We'll approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Don, take it right to Judge Lawson and Don Kautz.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
Likewise. Thanks for having us.
Report on drug court and veterans' treatment court.
Good. All right, well, thanks for having us. Thanks for your support in the past of our programs. We're here today to thank you for your support, to tell you what we've been doing with your money, and of course, to ask you to give us some more. It's kind of the way it works, right? Let's be honest.
I'll take a motion on that.
Yes. So, we'll start with Don. I think he just handed out some statistics that he put up.
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, I just have a hand up here. You can see, the first page is just kind of some data, again, on our participants and graduates. The next pages are the budget and the funding. So, I'll start with that first page. You can see, currently in drug court, we've got nineteen participants, fourteen in Clay and five in Becker. That's a little low for our average. We have a capacity to handle twenty in Clay and ten in Becker. So, historically, we average about twenty-six people in the program. So, we're a little low, but we're also in the process of screening some people now. I imagine some of them will get in and probably get up before too long. You can see, I break it down to where they are in the program, what phase. There's four phases total in drug court. And as they are doing well and progressing, they move through the phases, and each one gives them a little more freedom and less restriction while they're on probation until ultimately they graduate. You can see, too, the, we have eleven men and eight women right now. Since we started the program in 2007, we've had a total of twenty-eight participants who have been terminated unsuccessfully from drug court. But as of now, we have seventy-one people who have graduated from drug court. That's forty-seven in Clay County, twenty-four in Becker County. Of those seventy-one people, seventy were employed at the time they graduated, were working full-time, and one was a full-time student in college. We had thirty-three people, thirty-three graduates, who obtained their driver's licenses while they were in the program. All were current on child support, who had child support obligations. They were current on them when they graduated. They had all been clean and sober for over a year, which is a requirement of the program. They had all completed a community service project of at least fifty hours. Most of them, it was well beyond fifty hours. We've had one who passed away, one graduate passed away due to pre-existing health problems, and sixteen have re-offended since they graduated. That's a recidivism rate of about twenty-two point five percent, which is well below the average recidivism rate for people who do not go through drug court. And then you can just see the demographic data for the graduates is the last thing I have on there, breaking it down by gender and race. The next page is the budget information. You can see what, where the money goes for drug court and where we get our funding from. We're still, I believe, the, we have the most funding sources of any drug court in the state of Minnesota. We have, you know, state funding, county funding, Seventh Judicial District funding. So, we have a lot of buy-in and a lot of support, support there that keeps the program going. And you can see, the last page is the Veterans Court, which we have started. Last fall, we began the pilot program on that. And we just, in September thirtieth, we were awarded a federal grant, a three-year grant of fifty-five thousand dollars a year, approximately, which will help that program get going. We currently have one person in Veterans Court in Clay County. We're screening another, and then we're also screening someone in Becker County. So, I'm optimistic that we'll get some numbers there, too, before long. So, you can see, we've basically continued to have good, good success. Our numbers are good. The recidivism rates are excellent. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of positive things from drug court, and, and we hope to, even though Veterans Court has just started, we hope to see the same, same results from Veterans Court. So, with that, I'll turn to Judge Lawson.
And, you know, you get all of the invitations to our graduations. Feel free to come to our graduations anytime, especially if you've never been to a graduation. Drug court graduation really brings it all to the surface, all at one time, in terms of what drug court means to the people that participate in drug court. So, to kind of bring that to you today, we received, actually, Tama, who's the Clay County Probation Office that works with Drug Court and Veterans Treatment Court, received a letter in a Christmas card about the holiday season from a graduate, the graduated about two and a half years ago from our drug court program. And really, this letter sums it up really well for you, so I want to share it with you today. It says, "Tama, this holiday season, I've been thinking a lot about everything for which I am thankful. One of the things that keeps popping into my head is how much drug court helped me and how much better off I am now because of it. About five or six years ago, I was wasting my life. Nothing mattered to me. I didn't believe in a right or a wrong and had no regard for anyone but myself. I had no future plans or goals, and I did drugs because I thought they were fun, and I think they also helped keep my conscience at bay. When I got into trouble, I felt like the whole world was against me. I felt like a horrible person, a criminal, and expected to be treated as such by the courts. When I started drug court, I was surprised to discover that I wasn't treated like a criminal. I was treated like a person with an addiction. Instead of shame, I felt supported. Drug court, along with outpatient treatment at Cherhouse and Narcotics Anonymous, helped me address my issues that led to drugs in the first place, taught me healthier ways to cope with anxiety, and showed me that I was not alone. I was also extremely lucky to have some members of the drug court and treatment team write letters on my behalf to the judges of my legal cases and ended up having a clean and clear record after completing the program. I am now very happy with my life. I have no need for drugs or alcohol and no longer suffer from anxiety. Since completing drug court, I have gone to school for a sociology degree, helped my husband with his real estate business and started flipping houses, taking on a bigger project each time. My husband and I were married two years ago. We moved out to the country, onto a small farmstead, and now have two little girls. I'm currently staying at home with my kids, but am continually looking for ways to help people and improve our community. I believe the drug court saved my life. It gave me hope for the future by allowing me to avoid a felony conviction. It changed my entire perspective of the world, inspiring me to be grateful and give back. It saved me from spiraling further and further into addiction. I honestly do not know where my life would be now that I had not, if I had not had the opportunity to participate in the program. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you did for me and all that you continue to do for people struggling with addiction." That's where your money goes.
Right. Well worth it.
So, yeah, that was a great letter, and Tama was nice enough to share it with our team, so we wanted to share it with you all today. So, you can see, what we do really does make a difference, and you make a difference by continuing to support our program, so thanks for that.
Well, I know it's a great program. I've attended quite a few graduations, and it is just, it's just a tearjerker for me. I'm sorry, I sit there with tears in my eyes at times, you know, at, when they graduate, you know, how, you know, I mean, you change a person's lives. And I really want to compliment you, while Lisa's added that when I first started here and now you, I mean, you have very good control of those people that are involved in that, and I appreciate that, what you're doing for the county. It's very good.
Well, we have a great team. I mean, we have great probation, our compliance officers out of this world. Don is our coordinator, is amazing. I mean, we just have such a dedicated team of folks who actually do our staffings every week over their lunch hours, so.
I think we're getting the results from the program that you want, that we want, you know, so.
We are.
Because it's just good leadership. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
When would you anticipate the first veteran graduate if everything goes well?
It'll probably be sometime, I'm guessing, at the end of this year.
Okay. Yeah, keep me posted, because I'll let the service clubs and, and beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee and those people know, because I'm sure they'd want to be there to support, you know, that person, so, yeah, it's great.
Is there a limit on veterans, I mean, is there age group, or is there anything, or is it just a veteran, or, well?
Yeah, just a veteran with felony or gross misdemeanor charges would be, would be eligible. No age limit or anything like that.
I mean, no matter whether he's been on the service for twenty, thirty years, there's still multiple of the veterans. Okay.
And when Don says eligible, he means they're eligible to be screened. Then we'd screen them with our train, team to see if they're appropriate for our program.
Very good. Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'd also like to echo how good this program is, and I'm proud to see the results, and that letter does show it. I want to, right now, we, you're showing that we had forty-seven graduates from Clay County and twenty-four in Becker. Is that, is that a pretty consistent percentage? I guess, I guess just, this is just a word to our fellow colleagues in, in Becker County that, when you look at this funding mechanism, it's like a two-to-one Clay County, when it, when it comes to the participation, but it's more like a three-to-one on investment into it, Clay County versus Becker County. When you look at the Clay County forfeiture dollars, they go in, and the twenty thousand that we put in versus their ten, and I would, I would encourage my, our colleagues in Becker County to, to help support this program even more, because it is very successful.
You know, and you mentioned your recidivism rate, and, you know, so we're, we're saving a lot of money by having this in place. There's no question about it. If you look at, you know, basically, three out of four people don't re-offend. If it were the other way, and seventy-five percent re-offended, the cost to the counties would be just significant, so it's, it's good news.
It really is. It's an investment.
It is.
You hit that right on the head, Commissioner Whalen, because many of our graduates have children. These children would be in foster care, they'd be in and out of foster care, they'd be in jail, they'd be on public assistance. I mean, it's just such a huge number of ways that they'd be reliant on your public dollar that with this small upfront investment in support of them, all that's avoided in the long run, so. Thank you for investing wisely.
That's why we do it. Great work.
Well, thank you for coming today and letting, sharing this with the county, because it's just, it's a very important program that people should know about, the, the, what the county is doing for our people, so, thank you very much.
Just leave you with, ask, can you keep us in mind when you come through your next budget cycle? We're not asking for money today, but we will be, so I got to leave you with those words.
When is your, like, this, this state funding, what, what's the cycle of that? Is that, it's different, isn't it, from the state level?
It's every biennial, and their fiscal year starts July first.
Right. And we're, we're budgeted for all of sixteen?
Yes.
You are.
Okay. Thank you.
You are. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Likewise.
It's good seeing you.
Well, I guess I'm asking for jail custody. Correctional.
You, you're next, though, with us?
I guess so.
Finally, somebody we can say no to.
With no hesitation either.
Okay, we got, next thing on the agenda, is the approval of the bill of mail corrections officer vacancy.
Well, Mr. Chair, Julie Savat, the jail administrator, cannot be here today, and these are mandatory staffing requirements that are set out by the Department of Corrections, so just asking for your approval for her to go ahead and fill a mail correction officer vacancy that they've had. Understand, one of their younger correction officers, again, has gone on to a, to a law enforcement career in a police department, which is very good for everybody, as far as I'm concerned. I think it's excellent experience they get in a, in a county lockup facility to, to treat people how they need to be treated and, and be patient with them and things. I've always respected the correction officers. They have a tough job. I ask you to, for your approval.
Motion to approve the suggested motion.
Second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And just in time, Kathy, come on up. We are looking at salary requests for elite RN.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kathy.
As you can see by my request, the shortage of nurses is challenging for us. We still have two positions in public health that we've had open for quite some time, and, you know, the nurses are, are being pulled, not having applicants, and when we do have applicants, we aren't able to recruit them. So, my, my request is, we have a applicant that would be willing to work with our detox, but we, she needs a, she's not able to come for the salary, the first three steps that we can offer. So, my request is to offer her, it's a grade nineteen, the request is step six. I did put in the experience that she has, so she has, you know, management experience, which is, which is really great. And then, we, you know, we'll be able to train her in on the chemical dependency, substance abuse issue, issues that we have with our clients, so she'll be able to be trained in for that.
Is there going to be a lot of training involved, or?
It can, it'll be internal training, so Janine will be able to train her in on, on the chemical dependency issues that we need to deal with, with our licensure. Then I've checked with the Department of Human Services, and, and that's great, if she can be trained in with a previous director.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Kathy, I know the nurses are not part of the union, correct?
This position will be part of the union.
Are, are the nurses unionized?
The, all the detox staff are nurses, the technicians, just the detox staff.
Okay, so, the person is, you would want to hire is a union person?
She will be.
How does this sit with the other nurses when it comes to asking for more? Because I know in most collective bargaining, as a former union member and negotiator, in collective bargaining, a union member cannot bargain for his or her own terms and conditions of employment. So, how does this, how would this sit with the other nurses? I guess that's my question.
We don't have any full-time registered nurses in detox. We have variable hour registered nurses. So, we do have LPNs, but this is, this would be a registered nurse, so there isn't another position in detox that is a, is a regular staff position.
Okay. But this is a union, a union position.
Correct.
Have you talked to the union about this?
No, we have not brought this to the union.
Okay, I guess that's, I don't have a problem with it, but I just, as a union position, it seems to me the union has to negotiate terms and conditions of employment. Brian, maybe you can, doesn't, wouldn't that apply here?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, and, and Commissioner Angersall, we have had a lot of conversations with the union, and frankly, they are very supportive of filling this position. They, they like the staffing process.
With what Kathy asked me for.
I can't say we've had a specific discussion reference which step, but, but through the, the year and a half, maybe, we've had lots of discussions with them in regards to staffing and how it's going to be staffed.
So, there's no concern with the union?
I don't feel there's any concern with the union.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
Okay. I'll second the motion for discussion. Okay, we have, motion is second, Doc Grant.
I just, so, it's grade nineteen and step six, you want?
That's correct.
And where would it be without, is it a grade nineteen spot? You're just asking for a higher step, or?
Correct.
Okay.
And I understand this is the only position that we have, I mean, that she's the only registered nurse that we have, right? I mean, she's not competing with other, same, the same level, there's no one on the same level.
Correct, correct. Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a question in how we regard with the employment training. If, if we hire someone and put a significant amount of time in training into that employee, and then they decide to leave, is there a certain verbiage in the employment contract that requires them to stay a certain amount of time?
No, we do not have any, because they're not a contracted position, it's an employee position, so there isn't any, you know, that's the challenge, there is no, with any employee, there's no ability to set a timeframe with, with which they need to stay. Most of our positions are a lot of training, but there is no ability to do that.
That's unfortunate. I think that would be beneficial to us in a lot of different departments.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a good thing, we'd do that with any of them, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think in the, in the private sector, a lot of times, what you, you'll see is, you'll see a, a sign-on bonus that are given to people in the private sector, but along with that comes a stipulation that if you accept that, you have to stay a certain period of time.
Right.
Unfortunately, in our, this public realm, that, it doesn't work that way.
It's tough to enforce those, I think, so.
Right, yeah, but I, I do want to make a comment on, and this, this goes back to, it's a, it's been a problem, I think, since I've been on this board with nurses and, and our, our whole pay grade system in comparison to what, what we have to compete against.
Right.
And it's, you know, I, we could almost throw this step one, two, three, right out the window when it comes to nurses, because it just doesn't work.
Not anymore.
It just doesn't work because of, of the demand that's out there. We, we need to have them, and, and so going to the step six, it's what the market brings. We have no choice.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm always leery about going from, away from step one, because we always post the job from step one to step twelve, you know, the salary range, but I know what you've gone through, and I hope that the person that you selected is a good qualified candidate, which you must be, you know, that you're offering steps next to her, and I guess I'd support this thing. Any further discussion? Now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Wasn't Kathy have one more item? Excuse me, wasn't Kathy have one more item on the?
I think I said, consent.
There was consent agenda. Thanks, Kathy.
That'll happen to you too, Kathy, in the old.
Okay, let's see. I guess Kirk isn't here yet. We can probably do a few committee reports. We'll start with Kevin today.
Oh. Yeah, last week, I, I was not able to attend any meetings last week. The last one I did attend was the Clay County Joint Powers Meeting that would have been on the fourth, and I'm assuming Jenny covered that well.
Yes.
We did a recap of the retreat, which.
Yeah, it was very good, as we mentioned last week, it was one of the better retreats that we put on, and thank you for your, whatever you did in that part.
Sorry, I couldn't kill any more time for you.
On Thursday, February second, Moorhead Planning Commission, General Business, then we unanimously approved the final plan for Horizon Shore's Middle School addition, which will now be sent onto the City Council for final approval. We approved the city of Moorhead's five-year pavement management and transportation improvement plan. These plans are for the years 2016 through 2020. On Wednesday, February third, Clay County Collaborative Governance Board meeting, General Business, we elected Lynette Krinsky as chair of the governance board, and me as the vice chair. A report from Jane Patrick of the local collaborative time study. If any of you would like a copy of this report, please let me know, and I'll see that you get copies. We reviewed the fiscal year 2016 budget, and we reviewed the upcoming, upcoming, rather, fiscal 2017 budget and work plan. On Friday, last Friday, Local Advisory Council of Children's Mental Health, General Business, then we have representatives from the Moorhead Schools and Detroit, pardon me, DeWitt, Glenn and Felton, and they explained their mental health programs as they related to special education students. Many people do not understand that with early childhood intervention, the schools have the children from birth through high school, and sometimes that could be through the age of twenty-one. The discussion was quite interesting and educational. We had an access report from Lakeland Mental Health, agency reports from Clay County Public Health, Clay County Collaborative, Lakeland Mental Health Center, Lakes and Prairies Head Start, Clay County Juvenile Retention Center, Solutions Behavioral Health, and from the Moorhead Public Schools, and from the DGF Public Schools. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All the better going. Kathy, you want to do yours?
I also attended the Joint Powers Meeting last week, where we recapped the intergovernmental retreat and focused on some discussion points for our meetings for the next few months. Yesterday, I attended the press conference for the drone at the Sheriff's Department. That is an excellent tool, and I'm excited to, to see the collaboration between the water rescue and our agency and area agencies. It will benefit us all. That concludes my report.
I had Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus yesterday, and discussed a lot of different issues, but the three areas that MRCC is going to focus on this year are transportation funding, which is pretty much one we do every year, and then the greater Minnesota workforce and community development issues. And we're also going to support the governor's initiative for a hundred million dollars for broadband initiative, so, that was it for me.
Okay. I guess for myself, I, I also attended that, their own thing that they had yesterday. I think it's going to be a very good tool for the, for Clay County, and more just Becker County's getting something, Ottertail County all getting something, you know, so it's, it's going to be a good tool for us, but it's going to be a while, they have to get approval, get certified, I guess, certificate of it, and that's going to take, they figure two months for sure, so it's going to be a while before we put that into use, but I think the reason, while Valley Water Rescue's involved in there, they have a certified pilot, the pilot to do these things, and Brian, who's with the Valley Water Rescue, is a pilot, so he will be controlling, doing the controlling there. And then I also went with Minnesota MRCC, which we already have a report in that. Okay, Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're going to submit capsule assistance grant application to the MPCA.
Brought a friend along here.
Steve, I think it is.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kirk. Good morning. Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Moore. He's Public Works Director for the City of Moorhead, and Steve and I have been working pretty diligently here for the last, well, the last year and a half, two years, on, on this particular project. As you all know, we received a $600,000 grant from the legislature, last legislative session, to take a look at final design for the transfer station, the consolidation of the electronics in the household hazardous waste facility, and a single sort recycling facility. Since that time, there has been some change. The single sort recycling facility has temporarily been put on hold. We, we, Clay County, are in the process of doing a regional study with Becker County, Ottertail County, Grant County, Traverse County, Stevens County, Polk, Uckes County, about to try. about to try and determine where a regional facility would be most appropriately located. This study was encouraged strongly by the PCA, who is also going to be contributing some money to the study. Essentially, what this request for you today is, is it's a required resolution from the PCA that they have asked us to submit as part of the grant proposal. And we are going to be submitting the grant proposal on Friday. And so, this is why this is before you today. So, I think Steve and I would stand for any questions you may have.
This regional facility, is that something that what Fargo has, and what...
No, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, the regional facility is just Minnesota counties. We are talking, and we continue to talk with the City of Fargo, but this is independent of their participation, although they are going to be included in the study.
Okay.
Kirk, how long is this grant funding for? Typically, they have a time period on it when you have to...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there's really no time limit on this. The only real concern I have is the legislative session starts in March, and $600,000 is... If it's unspent or it's unencumbered, it could be possibly in play. So, I do want to get this application in and get started on it.
Yeah, because this was already awarded.
It has been awarded, but it has actually... Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it hasn't actually been encumbered, which means it could still be taken away potentially.
Okay, okay. And this application is being submitted in the name of Clay County, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, that's true.
Okay, just for the board's awareness, we've had a lot of discussions through our SWAC Committee, and we do have two members of the Moorhead Council involved with that. And we're also trying to come up with how we're going to plan long-term the ownership of this once we get this thing going, how that's going to all work. And I... Just so you... The board is updated that those discussions are ongoing. And I think there's... Right now, it appears to be pretty much mutual agreement on a process that we're going to propose moving forward with the facility. And then the question becomes how are we going to run it? And whose staff is it going to be and those types of things, so...
But you mentioned all these other counties that are involved in this.
No, Mr. Chairman, the multi-county one is on the MRF. It's the Materials Recovery Facility. That's the one that... This grant doesn't have anything to do with that, correct?
Okay, great.
That's a completely separate issue now. This one would be for the... A new transfer station and a...
The consolidation of the household hazardous waste and electronics.
Yeah, all into one facility.
I should point out, Mr. Chairman, that... And maybe Steve could talk to this a little bit as well. The city has taken initial steps as far as purchasing land, and so I think that that's a significant step and obviously a significant expense that they undertook as well to help make this project real.
Yeah, the purchase agreement is under draft, or it is almost finalized. I anticipate we'll be... I'll be going to the council for final approval sometime in April to purchase the land. I have preapproval to use our sanitation reserve account to fund the purchase, so the money is set aside to do the purchase. Now, we're just going through the real property wickets to do the deal.
That's the presentation you gave to the senators that went down for that?
Mr. Chairman, yes, that's the... What that presentation was for was to... We need some money to actually build the facility. And that's what that presentation was for, is to try and get some money to build the facility, so, yeah.
Okay, that's all part of it. Very good.
I'll move approval of their request.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Vote a pass.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Well, Brian, here we go again.
Let's go again, huh?
Consideration for selection of construction management risk firm for the correction facility project.
I have a memo here, Karen, that I'm just going to go through.
Something that we need to do on time, at the exact time.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't.
Mr. Chair, can I call for a break until the advertised time for this discussion?
I would agree. This is spending a lot of money, and I...
Just in case somebody shows up.
Well, maybe the media too might want to be here.
Okay, we'll hold off a little bit. Well, we'll do... Before we do that, we can probably do Brian's report, and he's ready to do that.
Sure. I was kind of thinking the same thing, so...
Okay, very good. Glad you came up with that.
No, I didn't. I was thinking about it, but I bet. Anyway, I'll go with my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Wednesday, I did attend the Moorhead Business Association for a few minutes. Les Steenerson, who is on the jail construction committee, had asked me to stop over, and he said maybe three to five minutes. The group was very interested. It ran a little longer than that. But what we have done, at the request of Commissioner Campbell, the Chair of the Construction Committee has coordinated a date for April 27th. And that's kind of occurred since then, and haven't touched base with you on that. But what we're tentatively looking at that will work out for them is that's a Wednesday morning, and that's seven o'clock in the morning that they have their meeting. So, we would certainly publicize that, so all Commissioners could attend that. And it is our hopes, the building committee, that we will have a pretty good design product at that time to show the Moorhead Business Association. Because we feel that they need to be well-educated and hopefully will support this project very aggressively. So, that's kind of the intent there. Also, and I think I mentioned this last week, but the Senate Bonding Committee has sent a date of March 2nd from 1:00 to 3:00 to have presentations concerning jails. So, we will have to put something together and coordinate that and see who's going to go down and different things on that date as well. That's March 2nd. I haven't gotten a confirmed email. I was going to forward that out. But the Assistant for the Chair of the Senate Bonding Committee, Senator Stowe's office, had called me on the phone, so I'm assuming I'm still proceeding with this, that this is set for March 2nd. I haven't received confirmation on that yet. I did send them an email last week asking for confirmation, and I have not received a response yet, so... A couple important dates there, I think. And the same day then, I was asked to participate in a PPP. That's the Public-Pprivate Partnership for the diversion. It lasted about six hours. And what we were working on was the... How are we going to put together these public-private partnership contracts? Who's going to be the deciding factor? Who all is going to be involved in the prep of it? I mean, you're talking about probably a billion dollars worth of contracts in regards to it. The... They had... There are two people from Ossers, I think it is Ossers, that are working on the financing for it. And because where the dollars are going to come from, when they're going to come, how it's going to be laid out is going to be important in regards to a sequence of construction projects when this project goes forward. So, there's a lot of things to discuss and decide on in behalf of the diversion authority, in which, you know, of course, there's six members of that authority. So, there was quite a bit of time spent on that. And then Thursday morning, that's already been reported on very well. The Joint Powers Committee met and reviewed mostly the retreat. And I'll just echo what everybody said. I thought it was the best retreat I've attended since the years that I've been here. It was well-sequenced and went well. Then we had management team Thursday morning as well. And one of the topics that we talked about was the 2017 budget already, because we have to try to keep a handle on the amount of personnel costs that we're going to have. We're going to have high insurance costs because that's two-and-a-half-year average, so they're going to be up next year. You have agreements with unions for that three-and-a-quarter, so I reminded the departments of that. And we need to keep a handle on those. Plus, we then had some training that we do every month. Darren coordinates a little video training, and it was in regards to... Yeah, it was... No, it was...
Yeah, religion's in the works, basically, and how do you accommodate prejudicial biases and things like that?
I think it was a very good topic to open up. And even though we feel we have a very safe and secure and comfortable workplace, we have to remind ourselves on an ongoing basis to be diverse and be open and things, so... And then the one thing I wanted to share with you folks about that too is the Strive for Excellence team now has become part of the management team. We did that about a year ago, and we tried to come up with ideas to make Clay County a better workplace. And last year, we kind of emphasized on if you see it, you own it. And it was... The idea was that if you see something... And I know this is a larger one in regards to the criminal activity out in the environment, but if you see something on the campus, that's not right. Even if it's a piece of paper that's blowing around, pick it up, own it. This is your campus. Take some ownership on it. If something is out of place, straighten it up as you walk by. Own the thing. If there's some ice on the sidewalk, contact maintenance and have it corrected. We think that resonated well with our employees. And Mark Sloan came up with another slogan this year that we discussed, and we think that's kind of fascinating. And of course, he used the Latin words on it, but what it is, is I will either find a way or make one. And what we emphasized there, that's on customer service. If somebody has a problem, then they come to the county with a problem. We want to respond to that problem. And if it isn't cut and stone as to what we should do, then let's find a way to help those people and do the right thing. And I shouldn't bring up Vicky all the time, but she looked at this and she said... That was in my yearbook under my name of she will either find a way or make one. And I think she does that each and every day within that office to make it run really well. So, I shouldn't pick on her all the time, but she just... There's so much fuel there that works out well. But so, we'll be emphasizing on customer service and finding a way to help people. And I think that's just great. I'm just really pleased with that. Darren and I had a meeting with Rhonda in regards to social services and personnel and child protection. And Rhonda wants to be discussing more of that. They're just really stressed out over in there. And we'll be talking more about that. We'll be talking at the committee about it. And it's a really important function that the county monitors. You heard Drug Court this morning. They were talking about families and children and things. Well, and I think Commissioner Campbell has mentioned it many, many times, we're spending over $3 million a year. That's all county money in child protection cases. That's over a tenth of your budget is going for child protection. And it just seems to be growing in leaps and bounds. And it just... I know I mentioned again at the Board of Business Association. I don't know how we get a handle on it. I don't know what the answers are, but it's really costing a lot of money. The administrators, the four administrators, the two cities, Moorhead and Fargo, and Clay and Cass County got together for breakfast last Friday morning to talk about some issues. And then we had a diversion administrative advisory meeting at 10:00 on Friday. And it just seems like there's lots of time that's being devoted to this, but we're at a critical point, and today may be a critical point. Might be an announcement of some dollars. And this thing is moving forward fast and furious, and we need to try to stay on top of it if we can. Met with your Chair on Monday, which we try to do every Monday morning, which has been very good, and to go through some things so that we're prepared for this meeting. I attended that drone press conference over at the Sheriff's Office yesterday. I think that's going to be an excellent tool for the community. And we met with... I met with Kevin and... Or Commissioner Campbell and Waylon this morning in regards to the jail building committee, so we could summarize what we have here today to talk about. And the jail finance committee is going to meet next Wednesday morning, or is that tomorrow morning, I guess? Not next, but tomorrow morning. And we mentioned this last week when Mr. Campbell wasn't here, that Lori's been in touch with Shelley, and we're looking at the $10 million bond probably in April. So, we need to start getting the schedule put together. We need to start taking some action probably this month by the board to resolutions and things. So, we'll get that all laid out. There's a lot of moving parts here, and so we'll get them. So, how's that, Mr. Chair? Did I burn up enough time?
You did pretty good. Looks like you've been busy. You're going to work that into a full-time job for this.
I saw... Yeah, I'm going to start working for the 20 hours a week.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Jay?
Okay.
Brian brought up that I was gone last week, and seeing as I've been at... Losing a family member isn't easy. And I want to thank the Commission and our management staff for the support. The beautiful flower arrangements that were sent were amazing. And the outpouring of support to my family was really appreciated. Oh, thank you.
Well, I know it was a loss, and it's tough to handle that, but...
Well, it's...
We're there. If you need some more help, I'm sure we'll...
Well, it's... And I'm just going to say, the... You don't know this until it happens, but the community really does come together to support when somebody's struggling. And to get cards and letters from people from within the county that have no idea who they even are, sharing their sympathies and support is really good. And I am proud to be in Clay County for that reason.
Thank you for those words. Before we go, before we get...
Of course, we'll...
Upcoming meetings. Vicky, on the upcoming meetings, you got March 21st as a holiday. What is March 21st holiday?
I made that up.
Oh, you made that up? Oh, I thought we got an extra day.
So did I for that day. It's been corrected.
Oh, I thought you was getting just too much control.
No, remember what I said? She'll either... What is it? I will either find a path or make one. This one, she thought this should be a holiday, so she made it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be a vacation day.
Good try. You crossed that off.
Have you got reservations yet for the AMC and St. Paul next month?
Um, I don't think so. Who else would plan to attend that?
I'll be going.
I will as well.
Legislative update.
March 11th, I think it is. I will be going.
That's insane. I'll let you know, Vicky.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're close enough that we can do... We'll take our consideration for selection of construction management risk firm for the correction facility.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. This construction management risk is a huge step for Clay County. It's the first time, I think, Clay County has done this. It's the first time, I think, Clay County has done this. Construction management at risk is kind of a new way of handling building projects. You employ your construction manager early on, and they work through the cost estimations, and they will establish to guarantee maximum price, so you're going to know what this project will cost in, I'll say, a couple of months. Let's give them a little time to get on board and work through the drawings that have been prepared and different things, so... And then they go forward with looking for the subs and putting out advertisements and different things, so it's going to be quite a process moving forward. And the selection process was, has been quite detailed as well. And before we probably get started with the memo, your architects that you have employed offered to be available by phone at 9:20 this morning, so if you would like them on the phone at the time for our discussion and coverage, you can certainly dial them up.
I felt we had great dialogue with them when they were present for the interviews.
Very good. So, I'll just go through this, and you will recall that the county board approved advertising for a construction management, manager at risk services for the jail project. Clay County received nine formal responses to the request for qualifications, which I think is a real good return. A review team reviewed the responses and suggested five of the nine for interviews to the county board. And then on January 26th, the county board, the review team, and the jail project architects interviewed the five companies. Our architect, Klein McCarthy, have worked on jail projects with four of the five companies interviewed, which really helps. I think that really gives us depth into these companies. At the completion of the interviews, I was asked to conduct further research into the background references and fee schedules, which I have done. The review team and the commissioners from the jail construction committee have met and conferred regarding the process and the qualifications of the companies. Plus, we also had discussion at the end of the interviews and in the board meeting on the qualifications and the priorities and different things. And I guess, Commissioner Moore, you had to leave a little early, and you didn't get on that discussion.
But we were able to.
Bring you up to date. Okay, good. We based our recommendations on the scores of the interviews, preparation shown, knowledge of Clay County's work site and projects, project, I should say, team and experienced staff, fees of the proposed work product, and physical location of the company in the And you can certainly see the memo, but we can have discussion, or at the end of the discussion, we would like to see a board approval of one of the following, so... I can go ahead and finish that out too, or turn it over to our chair of the building committee too.
I don't hear from them too, yes.
Yeah, this is, it's been a good process. I think it's been a fair process for everybody. And when we met after the interviews that day, and I know, Commissioner, you had, you did have to leave early, but when we added up everybody's individual scores, the top three just rose to the top. And, you know, there was, we didn't all have one particular the best, but in most instances, they were. And so, it's, the nice thing about this process is, is we've had a couple of these candidates who can still be very involved in this project, even though they wouldn't be chosen as the construction manager. There's a couple of them that rose to the very top, or have done an awful lot of construction work locally, and could still be very involved with the process and bidding to do some of the work. But our, the committee's first choice, and our recommended choice, would be construction engineers out of Grand Forks, is ultimately who we felt would be the best fit for us, so...
I agree. It was a, I thought it was an excellent process, and I think we were fortunate, we had five good companies that we interviewed, and I think every one of them would have done good work for us. In the end, though, we have to make a decision, and the final two we had were both extremely qualified, and I think would both do an excellent job, but like I say, we have to make a decision, and I think construction engineers edged out the other company slightly, and so I agree that that should be our choice.
Mr. Chair, I will move to appoint construction engineers of Grand Forks, the CMAR for our jail project.
Second.
I guess I was involved in the interviews too, you know, I have to agree with what you came up with, you know, I mean, that was a, because I've had several discussions with Brian, and there's already two, you know, when you have two of them, well, that sort of rose to the top, or two or three of them came to the top, you know. It's a tough decision to make, you know, and it's just, we have to do that, and we have to move forward, we have to pick one. I think no matter which one we picked, I think we would come out good on it, you know, but I think we have to get down to make a decision on one of them move forward with this project, it's a very important project, and I really appreciate your recommendation.
If I can add too, and I, again, I apologize for not being here last week, and it maybe delayed this another week from actually happening, but time is crucial, and I'm glad we're deciding this now today. They're going to, we're going to ask them to really be under the gun to get us some numbers in a very expedient way, so that, you know, as Brian mentioned this morning, we're going to be, we've already got a meeting scheduled with the Moorehead Business Association, and we're going to have many other community meetings coming up and play here, that we need to discuss this with our, with our entire county as a community, where we're going with this construction, its costs, and how we're going to pay for it. And we can't do that until we get these numbers, and it's critical, and I'm glad we're moving forward on this today, but just wanted to bring that up, so...
Any further discussion? Now, a call for the, all in favor of making construction engineers?
Aye.
All opposed?
And Mr. Chair, just for further information, I'll most certainly work with Jenny on a contract. The contracts usually are coordinated by the Architect Association, the American Architect Association, but just to be specific on it, what we intend to do, and what I've discussed with various companies, was the fact that we will be signing a pre-construction contract with an amendment for a full construction management. So, that would be like a cost of maybe, depending upon the price of the project, but about a quarter of a percent, so maybe $65,000 to $75,000, something like that. So, there will be no obligation, and we will make sure of that beyond that point until we're satisfied that the costs occurred and are working arrangements and things, so we still have a little safety stock there, so we will be diligent to get that before we bring that back here. So, we'll work on that this next week with them, and hopefully bring that back to the board next week for confirmation.
I do want to make a quick comment to thank you and also staff for your involvement in the interviews and collaborating all of the information for us. I felt we all had ample information to make a very educated decision, and frankly, it's exciting to see this caliber of workmanship in the Redder Valley, and I'm excited to work with a company like that.
Be allowed if someone wants to bring up? Not or adjourned.